I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have ten supervisors present. Supervisors Garcia, Grady, Kirby, Muto, Meadows, Mortigan, Robinson, and Morrissey are excused. Supervisor Carroll, Gents, Poole, Stalker are unexcused. Moving on to the presentation of the Axon body cameras by the Kenosha County Sheriff's Office and Axon representative.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here today. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Tony Gonzalez. I'm the captain of administrative services for the Kenosha County Sheriff's Department. I'd like to quickly start by introducing my administrative team that's helped us throughout this endeavor. Captain Brian Easter and Sergeant Kent Waldo. These two gentlemen have been leading the evaluation of our body worn camera system and energy weapon systems. Over the past several months, our team has conducted hands-on testing and assessments of several equipment options. Our goal has been to identify technology that best meets our operational needs, enhancing transparency and providing long-term reliability for the agency. As part of this process, Axon equipment was tested and evaluated during the country thunder event and during regular patrol operations subsequently to that event. And we ensure, we've been ensuring that we're gathering comprehensive, real-world feedback on that T and E. This evening, we're joined by our representatives from Axon to include Mr. Luke Baldwin, who's up front. He'll be presenting on their equipment and related technologies. And as many of you are aware, we're experiencing some ongoing issues with the current vendor that we utilize, which has prompted us to explore some alternative solutions that can deliver improved performance, better user experience, and a stronger customer support. With that, I'll turn it over to Luke Baldwin with his Axon team so they can start your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Captain. Hi, everyone. My name's Luke Baldwin. I'm the main contact for the Kenosha County with Axon. Joining me today, I'll let them introduce themselves. We got, excuse me. Got it. I'll just lean down here. Thank you all for having us. Luke Baldwin, main contact for Axon. Joining me is my director, Josh Bowling, and my other colleague Kirk Henderson, who helped with the trial for the body camera equipment with the sheriff's office. So I brought them here today. I've got, I don't know, six slides. I don't want to kill you to death with slides. I want to make this very interactive, so plenty of time at the end for Q and A. Thought I'd start with... So, who is Axon? We are a global leader in public safety technology. We're actually 31 years old. We've been around since 1993, 32, excuse me. We created the TASER energy weapon way back when. That device is now used by pretty much every law enforcement agency across the country for critical de-escalation of individuals. Since then, we've really grown our portfolio of products to include body worn cameras, digital evidence management systems, things like that. We've got a pretty big presence here in Wisconsin. The police department is partnered with us here locally. The district attorney is planning to partner with us shortly, Walworth County, Milwaukee, all the way up to Green Bay. So we've got, we've had a lot of success in Wisconsin and across the country. I would argue that's partially due to our mission, which is to protect life, capture truth, and accelerate justice. We're laser focused on serving law enforcement and counties and cities and making their processes as efficient as possible. With the sheriff's office in particular, we've been partnered since 2013 on the TASER front. So we're super excited to potentially expand the partnership to include some other technologies which we think will really help serve the sheriff's office. Tony mentioned some challenges with current state. This is really why we're here. Current TASERS are nearing their end of their useful life. With that, it brings increased liability exposure to the county by using old weapons. Current body cameras are unreliable. You know, the battery life on them is not lasting the full shift. They're overheating. There's some video quality issues. That creates gaps in accountability and safety, kind of defeats the whole purpose of a body camera program. They're relatively bulky, difficult to mount, and can be unstable at times, and the controllers that are used to operate them can sometimes fail, which leads, again, to Mr. unusable footage. And then some other features like live streaming, GPS, and Wi-Fi functions can be inconsistent, which can limit situational awareness. So we are super excited at the idea of solving these issues. We've worked with the sheriff's office to really build a program that we think is going to be tailored to solving these things. And here's kind of an overview of that program. Oh, boy. Next slide. Next slide. Got some animations built in here, so can you click, one click? So the program we've come up with starts with both officer safety and safety for the community. Our body cameras provide what we call full shift battery life. They were designed to last an entire 12-hour shift, and that includes up to four hours of recording time. You know, again, if a camera isn't on when it's supposed to be on, that really defeats the whole purpose of having a body camera program. You want it there to capture that critical evidence. TASER 10, that's our current gen TASER offering. It offers three times the effective range of our previous models, increased accuracy. With that, that helps increase officer safety and reduce injury risk when an officer's trying to take somebody into custody. Having that additional space and accuracy is really beneficial to be able to do that in a safe manner. Click, please. Thank you. Next, we have efficiency and accountability. So we've got a lot of built-in automation into our system to reduce the administrative burden on officers. We want, like, our perspective is we want officers out on the street doing what they do best, serving the community versus at the station completing paperwork. We also make it really easy to manage and share digital evidence, especially externally with certain entities like the district attorney's office, which helps speed up case resolution. Please click. And then lastly, we have some capabilities which have become table stakes in modern policing. We have a product called FUSIS, which allows an officer to livestream into a body camera, see what that officer is seeing, hear what they're hearing, to increase situational awareness, especially during high-stress situations. We have built-in transcriptions to make case review faster and more accurate, virtual reality training to promote better decision-making in the field, helping to reduce the likelihood of escalation, auto activation of body cameras when weapons are drawn to help ensure crucial moments are always recorded. We don't want the officer to have to think in those stressful situations. We want them to focus on, you know, the threat or the issue at hand, and the body camera to be on automatically to capture that. And then things like real-time translation, which allows for instant communication with non-English speakers, helps build trust, respect within the community. Slide, please. These are the impacts, though, that you guys should care about. These are what we think we can achieve and what we've been achieving with other agencies and throughout Wisconsin. You can click three more times. Again, increasing transparency and accountability to reduce liability exposure, fostering proactive, community-oriented policing, elevate training to improve the interactions with individuals in crisis, accelerate crime detection, prevention, and resolution through smarter processes, and, you know, automate routine tasks, put officers back on the street versus head down at the station doing paperwork, getting burnt out, et cetera. Slide. So that's it for kind of a high-level overview. Again, we've got Josh and Kirk here and myself to answer any questions you may have. Turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
Supervisor Pelsky.
With regard to the camera, you said there for 12-hour shifts and that it records up to four hours, and then it has the signal, the automatic it can detect.
Yes.
If they need to record manually, they can do that?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, there's multiple ways to turn on the camera. The signal, which you're correct on, that is the name of our auto-activation technology.
Mm-hmm.
There's a few ways we do that. If they turn on their light bar, for instance, and their sirens are going, we have that push out a signal to activate their body camera, because that's usually associated with, you know, high-stress, kind of urgent call for service. If they withdraw a firearm, obviously that indicates a pretty stressful situation, so we want to have that body camera go on automatically to be able to activate that camera. That said, if they want to activate their camera manually, they can absolutely do so. Yeah.
What if, and I'm not aware if they need more than four hours of recording, but what if they do?
We have certain features to, if you do have a very busy hectic shift and you're recording for six, seven hours, which does happen, we have a device called a quick disconnect cable. It basically goes in the vehicle and it allows the deputy to kind of get that extra juice without having to remove the body camera from the chest, put it in a charging station. If they're driving to, from call to call, they can quickly plug that in and get some extra charge to kind of alleviate those...
Is that part of the package, then, or is that an add-on?
No, it's part of this package, yeah.
Okay. And then with regard to the evidence, is there an extra cost for the DA to have, for the sharing of cases, evidence, for the DA allowing, it says cross-agency collaboration?
So, no, there's no, I mean, they will have their own subscription, which is kind of a purpose-built evidence management system for, built for attorneys.
Okay.
For them to receive evidence, do their discovery process, et cetera, but there's no cost to create that partnership connection.
Okay, so that's all included?
Yep.
Okay, good. With regard to new features, you know, since we're looking at a 10-year, preferably, will AI programs and new features already be bundled into the package, or are there going to be up charges?
No. So the AI era plan was built to basically take the guesswork out of, you know, as we roll out new features. We're targeting four to five to six new features per year. We don't want agencies to have to re-contract every time a new feature comes out that they want, so we've created a program to make it really easy to essentially subscribe, and as new features are built, they'll automatically be released to the agency to start utilizing.
Okay. And then with regard to payment, so you have year one through 10, so that's what we would need on an annual basis to pay upfront?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
That's all I have for right now. Thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
Supervisor Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming. Very informative. And this might have been discussed in committee, and I missed the committee meeting. Are these units owned by the county, then, or it's kind of a lease program?
Good question. They are owned.
They're owned by the county.
You guys will own them. We don't do the leases, so they'll be yours.
And should a unit go down or need to be repaired or whatever? Is there a loan program, or do you recommend that counties buy extra to have available when something like that happens?
Good question. So we've got spares built in to, you know, for Murphy's Law, and invariably one's going to go down or whatever, so you'll have spares on hand. That said, if, you know, you do burn through your spares or whatever, we've got a pretty quick RMA process, which is like, basically, you call us, we drop ship you a new camera, no questions asked, and then we work on that exchange process after the fact. So we've got a few different mechanisms to ensure that you're always covered, you're always going to have cameras on hand.
Without extra cost.
Without extra cost, correct.
That's the key.
Yes, yes.
And last question, it's, you know, technology moves very quickly, right?
Yes.
In my world, you know, three years, four years, maybe, right? And we're talking about signing a 10-year deal here.
Yes.
Do you anticipate that 10 years from now, they'll be as effective as they are on day one, or will they be, will they show their age the way our current system does after seven years, where we have grainy pictures and the batteries don't last and things like that?
Very good question. No, because we've got, well, one, the software's all cloud-based, so you're constantly going to be, from the software side, on the latest and greatest, just like a SaaS model. On the hardware side, we get ahead of that by having built-in refreshes into the contract. Your devices are only going to last so long. The lithium ion battery that powers the body camera, that only has so much life in it. So every two and a half years on the body cameras, you'll get a refresh to get ahead of that, to ensure that the batteries are performant, that you're taking advantage of, you know, the latest and greatest that we have to offer. If a new version comes out and is available at that time, the sheriff's office will have the opportunity to take on that new device, essentially. So it's a hardware-software combo, and we try to get ahead of it with those kind of mechanisms.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor Gray. Supervisor Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I came in about five minutes late, so if this is redundant, I apologize, but just to kind of get the eye, our collective eyes around what's happening. You're supplying TASERS and body cams, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So when you take a look at your new TASER, it's called TASER 10, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The expected life of TASER 10, everyday use, would be?
Roughly five years.
Five years. So when the five-year period is ended, is the county then required, or is it covered, that you would have replacement TASERS at that time?
You're covered on the TASER front as well. You have refreshes built in at the five-year month for TASERS.
Okay.
Knowing that that is going to be, you know...
So they'd be supplied as part of the contract, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct, yep.
And again, you know, something unfortunate happens, is the same thing with the body cams? You have a certain allotment?
You have spares built in. They're all warranted. We don't mess around in terms of if one of those units goes down, we get you a new one, you know, overnight, so...
So just give us an idea, as a percentage. Say we had 100 TASERS that we were contracted with, what's our spare quota? What do we...
Yeah, we typically do 3% spares on the body cameras and the TASERS, so that would be 3%.
Okay.
And so to Luke's point, everything's under what we call a technology assurance plan, which is the warranty of spares and the ability to call support and ask for a replacement if one were to go down.
Okay. Is it analogous to the body cams as well?
Correct.
All right. And you're expecting the life expectancy of this generation of body cam to be?
Roughly two and a half years.
Two and a half years, okay. Are the lithium batteries replaceable, or is the entire unit replaced?
No, they're, so they're, we do not have replaceable batteries to keep it dustproof and essentially water-resistant, so they don't have replaceable batteries.
So it's a sealed unit?
Sealed unit, yes, correct.
Okay. So we're looking at two, two and a half years. That means we have four body cam replacements in a 10-year period, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, all right. And you're saying that from a contractual standpoint, those are figured into the cost that we're looking at here?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
And that would be regardless of it's this particular generation, the next generation, future generation, it's all built in?
Yep, yep. That's what's enabled us to, I think, for agencies to get comfortable with the longer-term contracts, is having those refreshes built in.
I heard some questions in regard to Supervisor Gray's questions or comments, that the data uploads goes to the cloud, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in terms of your backing up and so forth, is it in the cloud? Did you have your own servers?
We work, our whole cloud environment is through Microsoft Azure, so everything is hosted through there.
All right. So basically, when it comes to data storage, you're using a third party, which in this case is Microsoft, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. I think that concludes my questions for the moment, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Grady. Supervisor Girsten.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Luke. So I want to ask a little bit about implementation. Has a, has an implementation team already been determined?
Not yet. We have an idea, but until, you know, a contract is executed and we get closer to the actual implementation date, we'll probably, you know, assign somebody typically a month, month and a half, two months before implementation, to start working with the agency, getting prepped, getting an agenda dialed in, a plan for implementation kind of dialed in.
Thanks, Luke. So once you determine that implementation team, what will that look like?
So we will send somebody out here onsite, essentially, for like two days, based on the size of what you guys are buying. They'll work with the agency, the sheriff's office, to get the body cameras set up, unpackaged, getting them registered, getting them assigned. There's in-car cameras as well. We will send installers out to install the in-car cameras onsite. And then lastly, TASER, we will send out an instructor to get instructors, TASER instructors that the sheriff office designates, trained up on the device, how to use it, et cetera, so that they can then retrain everybody else internally, so kind of a train-the-trainer model. So in a nutshell, it's us coming onsite here to do all the implementation and training and so forth.
Thanks, Luke. So I just want to say to the administration and to the sheriff, this implementation of a major project like this, that's where this, that's where the rubber meets the road on a project like this, so we want, and I know, I've seen different levels and different tiers of implementation teams. I'm not sure how you've classed us up here, if we get your A-team or, you know, but hopefully we get your best implementation team and that team, we get to vet that at all levels of administration and at all levels of law enforcement.
Yeah, you're spot on. The technology alone, you know, it's not going to do anything without the proper training. I feel like we did a pretty good job with Kenosha PD, so it would be kind of a similar program and plan there, but, I mean, you know, you're our primary focus. You're the reason, you know, we're in business, so we take it really seriously. We come out, we don't leave until the job's done.
What was the major challenge you had with the city when you implemented? What was the major, do you know what the biggest challenge you had in getting them up and running?
I wasn't a part of that. I don't know if, Josh, you can speak, but I, yeah, I don't know, I wasn't...
Yeah, I'm not aware of a major challenge. To Luke's point, so all of our, we call it our professional services organization, our professional services team. Many of those folks that are on that are retired law enforcement that manage their own Axon body camera and digital evidence management solution at their, at their agency. And so they bring not only years of experience working for Axon, but also at their agency deploying and running a system there. And to Luke's point, it is onsite. There's some pre-work that's going to be done prior to us ever coming onsite, working directly with the agency. We also leave behind the training materials, so anytime a new deputy's brought onboard or somebody needs to have refreshed training, that's available to them. We also have an internal system that's available to our partners and our agencies called Axon Academy. Axon Academy is a online learning module, if you will, and so there's different courses in there for the TASERS, the virtual reality, the in-car video, the body cameras, and all of that is at the disposal of the agency.
Thank you. And then my last question is, how does your help desk grade out when you go through and measure the performance of your health, help desk? How does that look? What kind of performance can we expect?
You've got a good, yeah, maybe Kirk.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kirk Henderson. I am a former law enforcement officer down in Illinois, and I like to say I was a customer before I became a fan, before I became an employee. I retired about four and a half years ago from my agency and came onboard because of my experience. You will get somebody 24/7 live. If you call late enough at night, it'll be somebody live in England. If you call really, really early in the morning, it'll be somebody live in Australia. We also have that email response. I was really impressed with how they supported us, because we did a trial like the Kenosha County Sheriff did, and when we signed on the contract, they came out and replaced everything down to every CAT 5 line, and that told me a little bit about the support we were going to get, and nothing I've seen since then has changed that in the four, three or four years while I was still a sworn officer and managing our program.
Thank you very much, as promised. That was my last question.
Thank you, Supervisor Girsten. Supervisor Gama.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question regarding the real-time translation and the draft one evidence transcription. I take it those are all AI-generated?
Yes, yeah, AI-powered, yeah.
Okay. Is it pretty accurate?
Yeah, darn accurate. Yeah, the real-time translation does up to, I think, I want to say 55 languages now. We often do trials.
Sure.
And we'll pull the room to see who's a, you know, non-English speaker and does really well on, you know, Spanish, Mandarin. We had a Mandarin speaker at an agency in Detroit. Arabic, it really shines well, draft one as well, accuracy, all of that.
I'd be curious, how would that work? Like, you, an officer walks in and then person doesn't speak English, how does the software work?
Kirk, can you explain it? Yes. I'm going to fish out this body camera from my pocket.
Kirk, can you please speak into the mic?
Yes, thank you. Good question.
I'm holding one of the Axon Body 4 cameras here now. Simply what I do is I would double press a button to engage the Axon Assistant. It begins connecting. It needs an LTE signal or a Wi-Fi signal to work.
Press and hold button, then say, "Translate to X" or "Autodetect," then release button.
Translate to Arabic.
Language set to Arabic.
My name is Kirk Henderson. I'm a senior professional manager with Axon. I'm here at the Kenosha County Board Meeting for the presentation on Axon body cameras and TASER 10s. And you would continue that conversation back and forth. When they spoke, I would be holding the button down. I would give time for the AI to translate that back into English and then continue the conversation.
Gotcha. And one last question regarding the signal sidearm. I take it like, there's like a device attached to a handgun and that will communicate with the body cam?
Yep, good question. It's, it attaches to the holster. It recognized that kind of metal scraping on metal when the firearm was withdrawn, and then as soon as it detects that, it pushes out that signal, activates the nearest body camera.
Gotcha. And how does that affect the battery life? And how does that affect the battery life?
Um, it's a good question.
Minimal impact. The signal only goes out for 30 seconds, and the device that activates the signal sends the Bluetooth signal to the body cameras. The body cameras do not receive Bluetooth signal, I mean, do not send them, they only receive them. So there's minimal to little impact on the actual body camera.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Gama. Supervisor Brown.
So I have two questions. The first one, I didn't have until Supervisor Gama asked you. That translation, is that then recorded or transcribed someplace? Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Kirk.
You can use live translation either with a recording or without, but because most agency policies require deputies to record when they're, when they're interacting with a member of a public, the default is to begin with a recording. Now, in an environment like this, when I just tested it, I could have stopped the recording and continued to use live translation.
Thank you. My second question, and I think it was answered, and you answered the questions for Supervisor Gray and Supervisor Grady, but the proposed cost summary, when I think of having a 10-year contract, I think that I should pay less each year, and this is not that. Can you explain why?
Um, there's, there's certain, uh, thank you. There's some inflation escalators built in to kind of protect ourselves against essentially giving today's prices, locking them in for a decade. So we've seen a lot of agencies move to the 10-year. Racine, I believe, is planning to move to 10-year, both the PD and the sheriff's office, Kenosha PD, because the savings over the 10 years are so great when you factor in annual, typical annual price increases for a technology company. So they are slightly higher, but the net savings over the 10 years is, we feel pretty compelling.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else Supervisor Brown?
No, that's it.
Supervisor Decker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Luke. How many years has Axon been in the body cam business?
Hmm, yeah. So we've been doing body cameras since right around 2009.
Okay.
So the Axon Body Four camera that Kirk just showed you is actually our seventh-generation body camera. We really took off around 2010, 2011. If you recall, something in the news that happened around that time was Ferguson, Missouri. We were one of the first agencies that kind of saw around the corner around the importance of body cameras. Because we already had the TASER out in the field, there were some states out there in the 2008, 2007 timeframe that said if you were to deploy a TASER in the field, that they wanted that to be recorded. And so our initial body camera was actually on the bottom, landed to the bottom of a TASER, and we've had, you know, seven iterations since then. So almost 13 years, 14 years that we've been out in the field with body cameras.
Okay, thank you. In your presentation, you say that TASER 10 has three times the range. Three times, what's the, what's, what's one times the range?
So, so.
What's three times?
Yeah, 45 feet is the maximum effective range for a TASER 10 device. So that provides a lot more time and distance for an officer, which is really what we're after. We want to give them as much opportunity, as much margin of error, et cetera, time to make a decision, so that, that distance is critical.
Okay. Again, in your presentation, you, it talks about automation of routine tasks. What are the routine tasks that you're speaking of?
So one example would be tagging the body camera videos. At the end of a recording, you know, the footage needs to be tagged according to its case, its call for service. We have a process called auto-tagging that automatically does that for the deputy. It integrates with a CAD system to basically recognize who is on-call during what call for service, and it'll automatically tag that body camera footage. That may sound like a small thing, but over a course of a maybe 10-hour shift, you've got nine, 10 recordings. It can really add up. You know, signal technology, I would argue, is in automation, not having to think about turning on the body camera. You know, they trialed redaction, or redaction, artificial intelligence software.
What's, what does that compose, consist of, the redaction software?
So, you know, if you have a FOIA request or something, you need to redact faces, license plates, et cetera. It can be a very, very time-consuming process to go through, manually redact, draw those boxes. Our AI will automatically detect those objects within a video and then basically automatically create the boxes for somebody to then go in and verify, does this need to be redacted, et cetera. So saves a tremendous amount of time.
So it doesn't happen automatically? It's if someone does a open records request for a certain part of video? You're shaking your head, no.
They have to go in and.
And then they can run like a script that says, okay.
Exactly.
They want to hear.
Yep.
Time-wise, run a redaction, and it'll automatically do it, and then you just verify it?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else for automation, or, I mean, that's.
Kirk, Josh, jump in.
That probably saves a ton of labor.
Oh, I mean, it's one of our most popular features for that reason. I mean, you want to pull your hair out trying to redact these long videos. Having that software to be able to do that for somebody, I mean, it's one of our most, you know, popular features as a result.
I would add the auto-transcription.
Oh, yeah.
You got a 45, 60-minute video, having a detective or a deputy have to find a key point, we can make that very fast by them just typing in a keyword, Miranda, when the Miranda warning's given, field sobriety, when they ask somebody to submit to field sobriety tests. So rather than having to hop throughout that video, they can jump right to that point in the video.
So it up, so basically in the cloud, it stores the video and the transcription, and a deputy or whoever can do a search for a certain word in that recording, and it will bounce on all those?
Yes.
It'll hit on all those.
Yes, that's correct.
Times it says that word. Okay. And that's all automated also?
Yeah.
What, okay, how does the, how does Axon work with the DA's office? Because I know in this coming budget, we authorize spending for Axon for the DA's office. How does that work with the DA's office?
So anytime you need to share digital evidence or a case, which is a bunch of digital evidence, we make that really seamless to be able to share that. Sometimes very large files, I mean, these are large video files. It can be a pretty onerous process to share those. A lot of agencies we talk to are sharing them with flash drives and CDs, and it's just super time-consuming, and then there's a lack of chain of custody at times. We would set up your district attorney as a partner within their instance of evidence.com so that when they need to share one piece of evidence, multiple pieces of evidence, it's essentially a one-click process. You can see on their end if they've received it, so there's a lot of, it takes that guesswork out of it. If they add new pieces of evidence to a case, they'll automatically be populated within the case of the district attorney. So it just saves a ton of time and makes it really, really easy to have that collaboration, you know, with, with the district attorney. And obviously, kind of CYA, you know, covers both rear ends in terms of knowing that the evidence made it through, that it's auditable, all of that. So that's, that's the process.
Okay, thank you. And how do, how do these body cams fit into the deputy's vest? Are we going to have to have new vests for them to fit your product in, or how does that work?
Let me take this one, since you've got hands on it.
No, absolutely not. We sell a variety of mounts. They tested several out during our trial. There's more than that. We want them to be able to fit on their existing uniform. We make mounts that will attach to a uniform shirt, to an outer vest, with or without molly attachments. So the, the agency has their choice of what works best for their personnel.
Okay, and not just vests, but other equipment? Will it, does it fit into, with other equipment we already have, like in the cars or anything like that, or?
Yes. When we talk about the in-car camera system, it's a very low-profile system that is mounted in the front windshield, just to the right of the rearview mirror. There's a router and a Fleet 3 hub that stores the video until it's uploaded into Axon Evidence, and then just a little signal unit to control the light bar. Those last three items can be installed in the back of a squad car, an SUV, or often sometimes they're installed behind the front passenger seat. Very small footprint.
Okay, thank you. How does the plan that is being proposed differ from what the city of Kenosha has in their plan?
I don't know the details of their, I mean, I'm assuming quantities might differ.
Right, but I'm saying, you know, let's see, the draft one and evidence transcription, all these things, you know.
I don't think that.
They're not upgrades, but you know, the.
Yeah.
That we do not have now, but we'll have with this plan.
I do.
How is it different from theirs?
I don't know the specifics, unless Josh, you know. I don't manage that account. I would say there's probably just difference in features. They might not have draft one. I believe they're wanting draft one and going to be asking for that. I don't know if they have transcription. So it would really vary, I think, probably on the software side, of which software features that they do or don't have would be the difference.
Okay.
The cameras are going to be the same, the physical hardware, you know, the in-car cameras are going to be the same, quantities might differ. So, yeah, I would say it would come down to the software.
Is there a way we can find out what the city has versus what were being proposed to?
Yeah, we could certainly get that to you either from contacts at the Kenosha PD. I happen to have worked with the sales rep that works with Kenosha PD. I happen to have my son works over there, so I know they've got the Body Four, the Fleet Three ALPR, the TASER 10, and I do believe they're looking at adding more things to their initial contract. Correct. But they are, I believe.
Currently do not have AI.
I do not believe so.
Okay.
It was mostly devices originally, I think. They were wanting to go with a new vendor.
Okay.
Yep.
And this question probably is not for Luke, but if there's someone here that can answer this, what, and this is based on our paying for the system, the cloud-based system, is that something we can bond for, or we have to pay off levy dollars? And then, or, and/or the tasers slash cameras and the hardware, is that something we can bond for? I'm assuming so, but what about the cloud-based? No, okay. You want to explain, Patty? And I only ask that because I know our cloud-based stuff, we had to switch from bonding to levy.
Correct. We did a fiscal analysis based on the information that we had to determine what would be capitalizable and in the CIP, and we could bond for versus what is not. And on an annual basis, our determination is 771,000 can be capitalized, that's the hardware component. The software component annually was about 457,000, and that would be operational.
As long as you're at the podium, do you, do you know if there's grants available to fund this nowadays?
I do not.
Or does the sheriff's department know that?
No, because we already have a system.
Okay.
Not that we have.
Okay.
They do not have a body camera system implemented.
Can you please come up to the mic?
Yeah, yeah, just, a lot of the grants that are out there are currently for agencies that don't have any type of body camera system implemented at their agency. So a lot of the innovation grants.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. Since you guys have been around since 2009, and we got our body cams around 2021 or so, why didn't we go with the company that we have now versus Axon? Any of you know? I know we have a whole new management since then.
Said I wasn't going to talk. So when we went to body cams in 2020, it was basically cost-based, right? Axon at the time didn't have the package deal like they have now, right? It wasn't all-encompassing, it was à la carte. And for the package that we wanted, the cost-effectiveness at the time just wasn't, wasn't there. So I think a couple supervisors have talked about, you know, buying a Cadillac instead of a Porsche and all those things, so we went with the Cadillac and it's in the garage. It's about it.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Decker. Supervisor Franco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you give a more detailed breakdown of the costs? In particular, like the 10-year option here I'm looking at is a little over $12 million. Can you break down, like, for instance, the actual body cams and tasers are part of this? How many of them are we going to get? And then how much does that cost? And then how much is, of the $12 million is that? And then what else is there? Like, give me a little more detailed breakdown.
I don't have the quote in front of me. You can pull it up if you bear with me, or we can chat afterwards. But generally what we see, you know, 30, 40% of a contract is hardware, which includes body cameras, in-car cameras, tasers, things like that. Obviously, this varies on what agencies buy. The remainder of that is cloud storage, software, things like that. So, you know, I would, I would say those rough numbers kind of you could apply to this total contract value. A lot of the recurring costs are going to be, you know, software and cloud-based storage, things like that. You'll see a spike at, not a spike, but higher hardware costs when the refreshes hit. So at the two-and-a-half-year mark, five-year mark, seven-and-a-half-year mark, 10-year mark, when the body cameras arrive, it'll be more hardware-focused, so generally those are the price points.
Let me just look at the hardware. So the hardware is roughly 30 to 40% of the $12 million cost. Is this amount specifically addressing the amount of tasers and body cams will be needed by all the deputies?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so how many deputies do we have?
300.
300?
Over 300.
So we're talking roughly 300 body cams and 300 tasers?
Less on the TASER side, but, but yeah.
Okay.
300, sounds about right, across jail and patrol.
How much less on the tasers, do you know?
I believe it was 130 on the tasers.
Okay. And that's pretty much the hardware, right?
And the in-car cameras.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then any other hardware updates?
Holsters, batteries, you know, cartridges for the TASER device.
Okay.
Cartridges for the TASER devices, the signal units, you know, kind of a longer tail of smaller hardware pieces.
Okay. And then the, the cloud storage and software is the, more of the line-share cost of the total $12 million?
Correct, yeah.
So all that, all the uploading of the.
The storage, the management, yeah.
Okay. Is there some way to get a laundry list, this detail?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it would be important for the county to know, the board to know exactly where, where the money's going to and how much.
100%, yeah. Yeah, yeah. It's all broken down in our quote.
Okay.
They're a little hard to read, so would welcome, you know, a chance to go through that with you, but yeah.
Yeah, if we can get that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
If I can just add that all those line item breakdowns will be in the resolution package, which has already been submitted.
Okay.
And it's divided into a Class A, a Class B, to separate the sworn side and then the detention side as well.
So we'll get all those numbers?
Yes, I, those have already been submitted.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you Supervisor Franco. Supervisor Garcia.
A lot of my questions were answered, but I'll break off of some of those. So just because I came in a little bit late, and I know I heard some people say that, so the, the contract includes the items, so the, the purchase of the items are in this contract?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess the body cameras we have now, those are the cell phones? The cell phones that get put into the shirt?
Yeah.
Okay, and so we're not getting new shirts? We're just going to put the body cameras over those?
Please step up to the mic to answer.
Well, there's no need to get new shirts. The Axon has an external holder, so it's either, like the engineer and Axon team have said, it's either like a really, really strong magnet, or there's moly, which goes on the outer carrier of the vest. So it'll just go in the same place that the hole is in the shirt, if you will, right? There is no need to get all new uniforms.
Okay, all right. So does the Sheriff's Office have dash cameras now?
Yes.
They do? Okay, and these are replacing, these will replace the ones that they have now?
Yes, it's important to note that all the squads will be outfitted with ALPRs also. So right now, we have 16? 16. Are they working? Yeah, they're currently not working, but yes, we have 16 ALPRs.
And--
That's the license plate reader, automated license plate readers.
Those are with Axon?
Axon, no. Right now, it's with the utility.
Okay.
Axon will be, with their in-squad system, all of the cars will be outfitted with those.
Okay, that's nice. And so with the cloud, will these have like real-time uploading to the cloud, or will they need to be connected to a base to be uploaded to the cloud? And do these, you said LTE, is that service included?
Good question. They've got both. You can do the, what's called a priority evidence upload. So if there's a critical piece of evidence that needs to get offloaded immediately, you can offload it via LTE, get it in the cloud. It's a little taxing on the battery, so it's not something we recommend for every single video. The other way would be through the router in the vehicle, or if you dock the camera in a dock, or via Wi-Fi. So there's a few different kind of methods to get the data off the device, but you can do LTE if you need to.
Okay. So for the signals, for the holsters, those are included with the price, right? How many holsters are the signals compatible with? And what holsters are they compatible with? Rather than just screwing them or taping them onto a holster, which holsters are they actually compatible with?
Too many to mention. And the challenge is always keeping up with the newest firearms issued, because that leads Safari Land and Blade Tech and other holster manufacturers to create new holsters. We use mounts that do not screw into the holster. They actually, we do an insert between where it connects to the deputy's belt, and it hovers over the holster, and it's able to detect the metal of the firearm slide or a weapon-mounted light. And whenever that disconnect happens, that's when it sends it out. So we can, obviously, we always have to get with an agency ahead of time to find out what holsters they have, what firearms they have, and pick the right mounting options so that we can equip that. That would be part of the post-sale service that the other supervisor asked before they would scope that out ahead of time.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to purchase holsters after this?
No, sir.
Holsters, okay.
No, sir.
All right, thank you. So my next question, how often is the next best thing coming? And like, is there another one coming? Is this the newest thing right now? Is there another one coming, like iPhones? You know, the next best thing is coming every year. So when do you recommend an upgrade, or how often should these be updated?
So they're built into the contract on the body cameras. It's every two-and-a-half years, for instance. We don't have a schedule. We don't know exactly when the next body camera is going to be coming out, but whenever that does, you'll have the opportunity to upgrade to that new camera so that over the course of the 10 years, you're current, we want you on the latest and greatest technology, just like iPhones, you know, we want you to be on the latest model. So we have that mechanism built into the contract to make sure that you're future-proofed, if you will.
So over the course of 10 years, they should be getting rotation of about five new sets?
Four refreshes on the body camera, two on the vehicle, one on the taser.
All right. So it's four, including the ones that they're going to get at the beginning of the contract?
It's every two-and-a-half years, yeah. So it'd be new cameras at the outset, and then at the two-and-a-half-year mark, is that one?
Oh, they would have to redo the contract at the 10-year mark to get that?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for answering my question. I was just kind of concerned if we're stuck in a contract and still had to purchase new items on top of the contract.
No, this is all-inclusive, so--
All right, I appreciate it.
It's all that's captured.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Gashke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. One is a follow-up on Supervisor Geertstine's questions about the implementation process. Practically speaking, can you talk through how that would work, switching from our current system to your system, to make sure that, you know, when deputies go out on shift, that their vehicles and their body cams and tasers are, you know, accurately recording what's happening? Obviously, I wouldn't imagine you'd be able to flip the switch, you know, from one system to the other in one shift.
Yeah, so one of the things we've been working with the Sheriff's Office is figure out what the best timeline is. So we have an overlap built in, like a six-month overlap, to give them time to transition. What we don't want, recommend, is what you just said, is, you know, ending one contract and starting another one, right, the same day. It's just too hard to do. There's too many moving pieces. So having that transition period is critical to ensure that the Axon system is up and running prior to the termination of the existing program. And with that, it's, you know, making sure that the body cameras are uploading, everything's being captured, it's moving your data from, you know, utility into the Axon cloud, making sure that the in-car cameras are up and running and offloading correctly. So to put it simply, like, it's got to be fully operational before your current system ends, which is why we have that kind of overlap period.
Okay, so theoretically, one deputy may be using the old system, and another deputy may be using the new system during that transitional period?
I'll leave it to the Sheriff's Office.
No.
Yeah, no. So like Luke was saying, we built in that timeframe to get everything migrated over. We're talking about over 200 terabytes of data. And we don't want to take the risk of our current vendor just shutting off the cloud on us, and we won't have that data. So that's why we built in, you know, this timeline, if you will. But when we went to utility originally, we obviously went from nothing to something, and it was, it went live, like everyone got their body cams issued, like, one day, and then they were using them the next. So that's our plan with Axon. We don't want to be on two systems. If you have something, go ahead.
I was just going to add, so from the deployment standpoint, probably the most arduous thing, the thing that takes the longest, is swapping out the vehicles, right? So a team will come out, they'll be able to do vehicles over a period of time, right? So how many cars are part of the project?
110.
110 vehicles. So that is going to take, the body cameras are fairly simple, right? It's provisioning the docks, getting everything connected, getting everything assigned. They could go back out on the street. Now, depending on how the Sheriff's Office wants to operate, they could wait until all the vehicles are installed, and then release the deputies with all Axon equipment. But our professional services team will work with them. But again, the vehicles will take a couple weeks, because there's just so many of them. And so there might be a little bit of an overlap, where you have some deputies with one, you know, the existing system on the street, now with the Axon system. So, and we'll go through all of that with them during the, kind of, the preliminary kickoff calls and all of that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you. Then one more question. If over the 10-year contract, a new feature becomes available, a new software feature that's not currently built in, like you mentioned, for instance, KPD might be interested in adding this feature or that feature, how would that affect our contract to add an à la carte option, something brand new?
Good question. So there's kind of two different things, right? So there's features, so we do updates and releases to the system about every 30 days, and those will just get pushed out. Now, those are enhancements to the existing system that are under contract. Anything new that doesn't exist today, let's say, and that the agency wants to add, the easiest mechanism is what we call co-term to the existing contract. So however many months you have left remaining on the contract, we'll just align that with the remaining term of the contract. So the best example is that if, you know, the Sheriff's Department gets 20 new deputies, right, that's obviously not built into the current contract, we would just co-term and try to line up all of the warranties and all of the features that are part of the system today. So you can buy things by themselves, but most agencies will do what we call a co-term to the existing contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gashke. Any other questions? I just want to tell everyone it's 7 o'clock. Packers will be on in 15 minutes. Just want to let everyone know. Okay, Supervisor Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to go back to the data storage, I understand this is included in the contract, but is it conceivable we would ever bump up against that limit? Is there a limit? Is it unlimited? I hear Chief Deputy say something about 200 terabits.
Good question to know, and just like a cell phone--
Okay.
We don't have a taser.
Okay, all right. And the reason I ask that is we're well aware of how intense the demand is for data storage and the capabilities of cameras being maybe more robust than they are now. There'll be increasing amounts of information that's going to be funneled in, so that's a good thing to know. So let's just do the numbers now for the hardware. Taser 10, approximately 130 is what we're looking at. We're thinking 130 units, ballpark. Okay. Body cams, about 300, ballpark?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. For the car cams, Chief Deputy, how many are we looking at?
Cars, 110.
Okay. And that will include the license plate readers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When it comes to the Axon 4 body cam, is that a design and build in-house, or do you farm some of that out?
So, no, we manufacture, we design, we manufacture those all at our headquarters in Arizona.
Okay, so that's a sole-source type thing you use? It's all in-house?
That's correct.
Okay. So let's just take the body cam 4, for example. Current price, what the county would pay for one of those would be approximately how much?
For the hardware itself, roughly $1,000.
Okay. So the question would be, as time goes along, say, the need for increased officers on-duty increases, do we have a locked-in amount during the contract time that guarantees the sum that we'd pay for each additional body cam?
That is not in the current contract. Yeah, I mean--
Well, we can give a breakdown of what the per-unit or per-deputy cost would be today. It's hard for us to speculate what it would be, you know, three, four years from now. But we don't see our pricing, as far as like the body cameras, change dramatically, right? So they may go up $30 on the new unit, you know, compared, something like that. But we can give today what the cost would be if they were to add the deputies in the future. We just don't know--
No, that's understood, because you can't look into the crystal ball and say, you know, body cam 5 is going to cost this much. It's not even been designed or built, you know, I get that.
That's correct.
So body cam 4s, though, where we contractually have the same amount for, say, future body cam 4s as we pay now, would that contractually be stated in our contract with you?
No, I mean, whatever, if you, however many you buy today, it will be today's price, but we don't know, you know, if you buy 20 body cams, you had 20 deputies in three years, you know, we don't know--
So even though the life expectancy, design durability is two-and-a-half years, it's still only by today, price today? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. What else do we have here? What about canine? Have we ever had cameras on canines? Any departments ever do that?
Yes, we have. I'm part of our trials team from our professional service organization, and we have experimented with that. We offered different mounts for that. Part of the problem is if it's under the dog's head and they're tracking, what are you seeing? You're seeing the ground, things like that. So I don't know that there's a real effective solution yet found for that, but other departments have experimented with it, yep.
We'll keep us posted. We'd love to be cutting-edge on the canine front. That concludes my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Grady. Supervisor Balski.
I just wanted to follow up with, when you went through the trials, was our IT department involved?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Kirk?
Yes, I worked hand-in-hand with them. Obviously, there's firewall restrictions that we need to make sure your firewall is open, so those videos can reach the internet. The advantage any agency does with a trial with us is some of the post-sale onsite services already been done, because we've already got your Axon Evidence Account set up, rules and permissions have been created. We already know that we're set up correctly on your firewall. Only if something would change by your IT team would there need to be adjustments made to that.
Okay, and as Chair of Judiciary and Law, I just want to remind the general public and supervisors that we do have a joint meeting on Thursday night at 6:00 with Finance and Judiciary and Law to take a look at the resolution. The resolution will have the pricing in it. I look forward to voting yes for this, because I feel that it reduces risk and liability. I feel it adds efficiency and cost savings for the Sheriff's Department and the DA's Department. I've heard a lot of great things about you, so thank you very much, and go PEC, go.
Thank you Supervisor Balski. Supervisor Decker. I have one follow-up question to Patty. What are we currently paying for our current system? Well, what were we paying for our current system, bonding versus operational, to compare it to this new one?
The utility contract was all within the CIP, because the way the contract was written, it was impossible to separate the software and the hardware when we needed to do GASP 96. Annually, that's $480,000.
Okay, so we're going from $480,000 a year bonding to $771,000 a year bonding plus $457,000 for operational, is that correct?
Yes and no.
Okay.
The $480,000 was the five, was a per-year, five-year contract with utility. One of the things we asked the Sheriff's Department to look into was the cost of renewing with utility, because mid-year, mid-contract, if I understand properly, mid-contract, utility came back to them and said, I know you have unlimited storage, but we didn't realize how much you were going to use. We think we need to increase your cost. And of course, they said, sorry, we're in a contract. But they knew that in renewing a contract with them, the cost was going to go up because of the amount of storage. So I have--
This is the five-year, for kind of apples to apples?
Okay. So that's the monthly?
Annually.
Annually. $690,000 a year, plus a taser contract of $143,000. So $803,000 per year for a utility contract.
If we kept with what we have now?
Correct. Yes, and I don't know what the split on that would be.
Okay, but it's, okay.
Because it would be spelled out the same as what Axon's proposing. We'd have to--
Captain Miller, can you get into the mic, please?
Sorry, at the modem, yes. It would be kind of split the same way because of the SaaS, whatever, SaaS, whatever you want to call it. And the reality is, again, we would lose a lot of the technology that Axon brings.
Right.
And hopefully, a product that works.
So we're looking at currently $833,000 a year?
803.
803?
Yeah, 803, 801, to be exact.
Okay.
And that includes if we were to renew with utility for five years, plus go with taser 10 with Axon.
Okay, so we're looking at 803 a year for five years, if we stay with what we're at, and then 1.228 per year if we move to Axon. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief Deputy. Any other questions from the supervisors? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank you for coming. If there are any questions that you may have after you sleep on this and you go to committee on Thursday, feel free to reach out to the Sheriff's Office, Captain Gonzalez, Chief Deputy Miller. They would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Supervisor Decker, seconded by Supervisor Brown to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.